Good evening. This is Tuesday, March 23rd, 2021, meeting of the Town of Berlin Planning Board. As a preliminary matter, please note that this meeting is being recorded and some of the attendees are participating by video conference. Accordingly, please be aware that other folks may be able to see you. Anything that you broadcast may be captured and recorded. And shared with neighbors and friends or wind up as a TikTok video. This is Tom Sanford, Chair of the Planning Board. Permit me to confirm that all members and persons anticipated on the agenda are present and can hear me prior to me calling the meeting to order. Planning Board members, when I call your name, please respond in the affirmative. Jay Teach.
Hi.
Timothy Wheeler.
Yeah.
Carolyn McDonald.
Here.
Tom Sanford here. We'll get to the anticipated speakers on the agenda, but for now. We're going to just. Move on. With the quorum of the board present, I call this meeting to order at 7:33 PM Tuesday, March 23rd, 2021. This is an open meeting of the Planning Board being conducted remotely consistent with Governor Baker's executive order of March 12th, 2020, due to the current state of emergency in the Commonwealth of Massachusetts due to the outbreak of COVID-19 virus. Specific information and the general guidelines for the remote participation by members of the public can be found on the Town of Berlin website. The Governor's order suspends the requirement of the opening meeting law to have all meetings in a publicly accessible physical location and allows it encourages us to participate remotely. For this meeting, the Planning Board is convening using a Zoom platform as posted on the agenda, which includes links to the public to join in this meeting. I will introduce each speaker on the agenda. After their concluding remarks, I will invite board members by name to provide any comment, questions, penetrating insights, and or motions. Please hold all your insights till your name is called. Board members and speakers on the agenda, please remember to mute your phone or computer when you're not speaking. Speak clearly to ensure accurate minutes are recorded. For any response, please wait until you yielded the floor and state your name before speaking. If board members wish to engage in conversation with one another, please do so through me to avoid multiple conversations at the same time. Lastly, please note that each vote in this meeting will be conducted by roll call vote. Thank you all for your understanding and cooperation. So first order of business is mail and bills or things like that. We didn't have any bills. We did have some mail though. One of the items that we were asked to talk about or comment on was the letter that the selectmen have from Web Joe and the selling of the lot at 169 Lyman Road in Berlin, Mass. They wanted the planning board to weigh in. I don't think we have anything other than to say that we don't have any objections to it, right?
Right.
Okay, so I'll respond to Margaret's email that we don't have any objections. I don't think we need to put anything in writing. Do we?
No. An email is fine.
Email is fine. Okay.
Yeah.
And I believe Janet is now here. Well, kind of.
We had our usual. Mail from surrounding towns that are holding public hearings and what have you, but none of them seem to be really. Noteworthy.
I have a bill.
Okay.
Let me find it.
Is this the email that you had sent the other day that you wanted to talk about?
Um, no.
Okay.
I want to talk about that, but.
Okay, I just wanted to make sure. So you got a bill. What's your bill for?
Well, I fortunately managed to. I got the notice for the hearing and, and you know, I sent that around everybody and in it is the order confirmation with the bill. So. I'd say, why don't we just go ahead and pay it?
Okay.
It's a bill for $256.10 for a hearing notice in the Worcester Telegram and Gazette in regard to the warrant articles on the annual town meeting for the hearing scheduled April 13th. So I move that we pay that bill.
Second.
Okay, we have a. A proposal in a second. Any discussion?
That's for two minutes, two runs, right? Yeah.
It says two, so that's my assumption. Sometimes we get. Two bills and it splits it, but and this was a significant size, but. $125 a piece that that probably would make sense for two, I would think, yeah.
Yeah, because in your email, you requested two run dates.
Yep.
Yeah.
Okay. That's fairly clear. So. We have a motion in a second. Is there any more discussion to whether we pay this bill or not? And you don't hear anything, don't see anything. Okay, I will call for a vote and unfortunately we have to do it as a voice vote. When I call your name, please respond in the affirmative. Jay Teach.
Hi.
Timothy Wheeler.
Hi.
Carolyn McDonald.
Hi.
Janet Campbell.
Hi.
And Tom Sanford, I. My motion carries that we pay the bill to.
Telegramming is.
Yeah, but it's not. It's skate house media, isn't it?
Yeah, probably.
It's probably on that email that you sent around. So I'll make out a warrant and we'll sign it up and we'll get it paid. We still have a few more minutes, Tim, before. The continuation of the discussion of the. Definitive subdivision. So do you want, do you have time? Do you have like, it take, like, how long will it take? Five, 10 minutes? To talk about what you want?
Not even that, no.
Let's do that next then.
What did I do? I've lost it. Oh, there we are. I got too many screens going on here at once. Um. As part of the MVP program, municipal vulnerability preparedness, the town identified a number of potential projects. The state has since come in with a streamlined process for looking for state funding to support certain projects. There's this group of about 10 different state agencies that have funding sources. And so what the state said was, if you give us your top three or four projects that you would like to apply for funding for, we will send those to a review group on the state level who will get back to you and say, you ought to apply to this program. This project is most appropriate for funding out of whatever part of the state government makes most sense. So we prioritized those projects into a smaller group in the top three, interestingly enough, ended up being the Route 62 corridor, looking at traffic issues, Gates Pond and 62, the five corners, Pleasant Street and 62 in particular, but also tried to look into the issue of rail trail and Center Village and Cultural Corridor and stuff like that. So. That was one. Another was the intersection of Pleasant and South. And that, of course, is on River Bridge's plate to some degree, but there has to be some evaluation of the expense and stuff. And the third project that got high marks during the MVP program was the Mill Pond in South Berlin and the dam, because the land, I believe, is in tax title. And there's question about, you know, does the town want to be the owner of this property with this dam? And so. You know, I think some people have said it has potential recreational use, but others have said that may all be well and good, but the risks of owning a dam and being responsible for its maintenance is significant. And does the town really want to charge into that door? So. Again, it's a question of having help evaluating the infrastructure down there and determining what needs to take place. So those are the three highest priorities. And the Central Mass Regional Planning Commission is willing to work with the town in prepping those into a format that we could submit to the state for this review that they have said they would do. And in order to do that, Central Mass would like to use some of the local technical assistance hours that we receive on an annual basis. We get about. Depending on how many meetings I go to with Central Mass, we earn more hours. So we earn a base of 12, but we can earn another 12. And I think generally we've got somewhere around 20 to 24 hours. So. They would take time out of that pocket and apply it to this study and prepare for the application to the state. But the Planning Board has the final say as to whether or not those hours are utilized by anybody in particular in town. So. I'm supposed to ask the Planning Board if you'd be willing to let Central Mass work on this project for the town. And if you're willing, then I can let Central Mass know that it's okay for them to use some of those hours. Does that make sense?
What else would those hours normally be used for?
Well, sometimes we use it for conservation commission maps, updates and stuff like that. You know, it'd be lots of, lots of years. We never use all of them. We don't. I mean, there have been years where we've asked them to assist us on some little, usually it's a smaller project. Because, you know, 15, 20 hours doesn't go very, very far, certainly.
Somewhat off the topic is the pond that the dam is behind, actually a pond. I was looking on satellite maps. I don't see any water.
It had water. The other day it had water, but the dam is breached in a number of spots. So it mostly is a channel now.
Oh, you mean if the dam were intact, it would be a pond?
Yeah.
The dam has also been flagged by the state as dangerous.
Yeah, and I, I mean, I disagree with that. The dam's been there for 200 years. Been through every dam.
Since I moved in here.
Right. I mean, it, it was breached by those big floods in the 50s and, you know. Actually, it serves as a flood control for the down river because the undersized, you know, River Road Bridge over Northbrook, probably so.
Right.
Was the idea that it might get restored and then there would be a pond there?
It was a pond earlier, up till a couple of years ago.
Right. I think either that I've heard talk about restoring the dam and restoring the pond or just removing the dam completely.
Right.
And letting it just all go back to how it was 200 years ago.
Yeah.
If you restore the. If you restore the pond, it's going to be full of peepers, which are going to drive Janet crazy, right?
No, they're there anyways.
Oh.
They feel like it's full of geese and it's there are geese there, but a lot of people fish on it and it used to be everybody ice skated on it, you know?
We used to raft and canoe and I mean, we used it all the time.
Yeah, unfortunately, the most cost effective way to deal with the problem is to remove the dam completely. So while it would be great to restore it and have a recreational pond, the cheapest way is to not.
Right. But the, the question is, do we want someone to help evaluate?
Do you need a motion?
I need a motion to expend some of the CPA, the, not CPA, the.
CMRP.
Nice try.
Yeah, nice try.
LTA hours from Central Mass, local technical assistance.
Are they going to look at all three areas?
They are gonna help formulate the application to the state that lets the state.
Decide.
Tell us which projects need to go to which departments and which have the most possibility of getting certain funding.
The one that's the most dangerous right now is self, self street crossing Pleasant.
Unless you live, unless you live on Gates Pond Road.
Right.
Well, that too.
There's more accidents.
Fly, they fly through there every day. They're coming up from the rotary and, and they cross traffic, you know?
There's, there's, there's more accidents on Gates Pond and 62 than anywhere in town though, so.
Right. And pro, and really, because Marlborough Road and River Road, now that all the traffic has increased, there was a while before they put the solar stop sign that flashes. There was at least one a day, right? Which exactly, there was at least one a day. It was horrific.
Right.
But yeah. Well, I mean, do you want a number of hours or you want me to just say half? Do you want?
Whatever's necessary.
Yeah.
I'll squeeze time item for something else if we need it. Don't worry.
Okay. I make a motion that we allow Central Mass Regional Planning to use the Planning Board's hours to work on the study.
The prioritization.
For mentioned.
The application, yeah.
Yeah.
The, the good news is we get more hours on, on the first of July. So, you know, basically we're using up what's left for this year.
And so the fourth item was open space. Are they going to research all four or just the top three?
I, it depends on the amount of time. I think we know who the open space groups are that we need to go after anyway, probably. These others are, it's a little more complex.
Sure.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion in a second. Is there any more discussion? Seeing nobody raising their hand, I'll ask you to vote. I have to do it by roll call vote. Please respond when I call your name. Jay Teach.
Hi.
Timothy Wheeler.
Hi.
Carolyn McDonald.
Hi.
Tom Sanford, I.
Janet.
Janet Campbell.
Hi.
Excellent. Thank you. Motion, motion carries in the affirmative.
Is there a due date? Is there some?
They're going to use them up in the next couple of weeks.
But, but the, these applications that we send in, that they've gone at a certain time?
This, the state said that if we got, said the. The, how do, there's some special name for the way they wanted to call us, something choice or something. But if we get this in by the early part of April, then they'd react to it and tell us who to apply to and all that sort of stuff. And it's, I guess that, that the goal is not to have 10. 10 different funding sources with 10 different dates in which you have to submit and that sort of thing. The idea is to streamline the process. So you, you'd apply more efficiently and I don't know if they were saying there'd be rolling applications or whatever, but you just want to streamline it. So it's not kind of crazy the way it is now.
Sounds great.
Excellent. Okay. The time is now where we should be moving on to the continuation of the discussion for the definitive subdivision on Highland or off of Highland. I don't know. I can you, Carolyn, can you see whether Seth is on?
Yep. So Seth is here, Scott Miller from Haley Ward, Mark Rhodes, Andy Baum, and somebody else that may also be related to this.
Okay. I, this afternoon, I sent around two letters and updated plan for people to consideration for tonight. So I think the best thing to do is, is let's have Scott just give us a summary of his letter. And then we can have Seth, who has responded to that letter and updated the plan, explain what he did. And if there was any other exceptions, I didn't think there was any exceptions to the notes that were on the letter. And then we can go from there. How's that? Does that make sense?
Yeah. Yep.
Sorry, I cut out. This is.
Hi Scott, how are you?
I'm good. I've seen you since, most of you since we could talk to each other in the same room, so. We did take a look at the proposal from Duchemin and Dillis, and I think we had four, four comments. I'm going to go off the top of my head. But it was the first related to, I guess, two of them related to marking of the plans and the contents was the putting the butters on across the street noting Highland Ave, the width. This, those two items have been responded to in, in the draft, in the drawing changes that came out, I guess, today. We had a comment in there regarding the storm water management pond is going to be located near a existing septic system on the back. I think it's 128. And it was noted as an approximate location of the septic. What I'm suggesting is if you find that you want to approve this, is put a condition of approval and to verify the outer edge of that septic system before the, the pond goes in. That's, so you have a your 50 foot offset required by, by Title V. And the last item, I apologize, I'm going off the top of my head here, but the.
Fire, fire.
Fire protection. Thank you. It's just given some consideration to protection. I know it's a small subdivision and Seth noted that it was, it doesn't really rise to the level required by your bylaws, but some consideration given to a cistern, but probably more likely is, is if, if this will be served by individual sprinklers meeting NFPA code. And I'm not sure where your, your fire department has been for the last. You know, since the, the last time we did, I think they've been looking for sprinklers in, in some of these buildings as they're going in as a, a different approach to it. And that, that does probably works better than, than a cistern that may or may not have water in it when you need it. I think that was, I think those four comments were, were in my letter.
And the, the drainage clogs and stuff made sense?
That was good. Yep. Yeah, it was, it was fairly, it was a simple, simple system in that it did meet those requirements.
Okay. Does any, before we ask Seth to comment and tell us what he did and what he objects to, is there any board member that has questions for Scott?
No, it's pretty straightforward.
Yeah. Pretty much.
Good, thank you.
So Seth, can you give us a little overview of your responses? I know you updated the plans and, and that answered probably three out of the four questions. A butter is in the width and all of that.
Yes, of course. So good evening, Chairman and members of the board. I want to thank both the board and Mr. Miller for expediting the peer review. I know there was some question last time regarding both the economics of it and timing of it. So we did receive those comments. Really, with the exception of the cistern comment, those were some minor plan edits that we completed. We've shown the width of Highland Street, which is a county layout road. And we've added the additional butter names on our plan. So I think those are pretty straightforward and there's not much to adjust there. As far as the question of the cistern, this is a two lot subdivision as it's presently drawn. And the two lots that are being created are each in round numbers, 30 acres. So my concern with putting a cistern is even if it was put on the road, its actual reachability and serviceability towards the residences that may be far removed from the road are pretty limited. So if the project were to break the threshold of the three lots, then I think the sprinklers would be preferred. And that, that's consistent. The last subdivision I was before you for, that was something that was addressed. We met the supplemental water requirements by requiring cisterns and, or excuse me, NFPA sprinklers in each of the dwellings. At this point, the development of the remaining piece of land really isn't known. So I, I feel that we're under the threshold that the town requires. So it may not be warranted to require that, but if it were to go over that, then we could certainly have a condition that they would have to put sprinklers in it.
Um, I, I, I look at this two ways. I, I agree with what you're saying, Seth. But we all know 30 acres, they're going to wind up being subdivided at some point in time. So. And I agree that putting a cistern in and trying to size it for something that's in the future, that we don't even know what it's going to be is probably not very smart. But for sprinkler systems in the, in the, in the houses, in the individual dwellings, I think that probably makes sense. So how do we condition it? Can we condition it at the third lot or, because these are going to come before us as A and Rs, I would imagine. Right?
I would imagine down the road, I mean, as, as this is essentially a family property that they're doing this for, for the future. As long as the bylaw, zoning bylaw stays the same, this would be approached as an A and R lot after they complete the other infrastructure.
So our leverage at that point is limited because you're in our plan and we have to approve it. If it meets the bounds and size requirements and frontage requirements, then we don't have any say but to approve it. So how do we condition this to enforce something in the future?
That, that's a very fair point. I, I don't have a answer to that. I mean, it.
Well, I do. Make you do sprinklers. So I'm trying to balance what's, what we like and what you want to do.
I think really, as, when it comes down to spending the applicant's money on housing things, that's, that's really out of my realm. I, I know some of the applicants and then their family are on the phone. I'm, I'm happy to, if the board would allow, to have them weigh in on what would ultimately be good for, for them and what they're doing on it.
Yeah, I'd like to hear from them, but I'd like to hear what Scott sees in other communities. And I'd also like to suggest that we seek input from the fire department before we finalize stuff too.
Well, I want to hear. Hearing anyways though, right, Tim?
What?
We'd have to have a public hearing.
Yeah.
And we, and I, I checked, we do not have any comments from either police or fire.
Okay. Scott, what do you see in, in other municipalities that there, they, particularly if they don't have water?
It, I've got some communities that have, have areas that aren't served by the fire, by Sterling Lancaster, there's a couple of them. And they are requiring NFPA sprinklers in the, in the, the homes that are in a subdivision. They, you're right, can't do much with an A and R.
Right.
I, I've got one in, in Lancaster that was near a hydrant, served by Sterling, but part of the subdivision went into Lancaster and it was beyond the water system there. And now they're at the point of, of trying to, there was a fire, took the house, one of the houses out, a fairly new house. And they're trying to bring water main down from Sterling now into Lancaster now. So it's the, it, it's the opposite problem. You know, they're trying to solve it after the fact. It's hard to put the sprinklers into the buildings once they're, they're constructed.
Yeah.
And that the sprinklers that are going in are fairly, I don't call them inexpensive, but they're designed to get the people out. They're not, not really there to save the house as much as a. I don't call them inexpensive, but they're designed to get the people out. They're not, not really there to save the house as much as a a standard sprinkler system, but it, it does provide better protection for the, for the occupants.
Thank you.
If I may just reiterate with, with the cistern, even if it was put in now for whatever unknown house placement down the road, I, I just hate to see the family go through the expense of putting it there and then have it not even reach the dwellings that it's meant to serve. So, you know, the 30 acres, these could be 800 feet from the end of the cul-de-sac.
Yeah. No, I think we're in agreement on that. The cistern isn't practical, given the distances we're talking about. We're talking about a sprinkler operation, one of these state of the art things that are coming online now, I guess. But I'd like to hear from the, from, well, who's there? Family, Andy, or anybody else?
Do you want me to allow Andy to talk?
Yeah, who, anybody raise their hand?
No. Oh, there goes Andy.
Good.
All right.
Can you hear me now? Yep. All right. Thank you, Mr. Chair. Yeah, the, the, the individual building sprinklers are the most pragmatic. Especially considering the distances that need to go from the cistern, from a firefighting perspective to the dwelling locations. I, I think the family would be fine with having that a condition of approval for, for those lots.
Good, thanks.
Thanks.
Anybody else have any questions for either Seth or Scott?
No, it looks pretty good.
Yeah. So do we want to set a, a hearing date?
Yeah.
The hearing for the bylaw issues is which is the 13th?
That's right.
Town meeting's been changed to the 15th, Saturday?
Correct.
So.
15th of what?
May.
If we were to schedule a hearing for the 27th of April, that would still give us the 11th to devote to the town meeting. You know, just to, if there were things that we wanted to review, we'd have the hearing on, you know, the 13th and, and we could do this hearing on the 27th for the subdivision and that would still give us time on the 11th to otherwise, if town meeting were gonna be when it normally would, I'd say, I, I just assume not do a hearing the week before, but I don't particularly want to do the hearing on the 11th because that's right before town meeting. And, and I don't want to push it off way off to the 25th of May either. So I guess I'd suggest we shoot for the 27th of, of April. That means I'd have to have it in the paper on the 16th and the 9th. Which means I just have to get it to the paper by the 5th, which gives us plenty of time there. One, two, yeah, because we got three weeks before that. Three weeks before our meeting on the 13th, because there's an extra Tuesday and
Right.
March. So that wouldn't be too bad, I don't think. And that gives the fire department a chance to chime in if they want. So I move that we hold a public hearing for the review of this subdivision plan on Tuesday, April 27th at 8 o'clock.
Second.
And the peepers say yes.
All right, so I have a motion and a second. To hold a hearing on the 27th of April for the definitive subdivision on Highland street or road?
Street. Street. All streets leave the center of town. All roads connect streets outside of the center of town.
Got it.
Yeah, the web.
The web, yep.
Any, can I, I have to call by roll call vote. When I call your name, please respond with your your response. JT?
Hi.
Timothy Wheeler?
Hi.
Carolyn McDonald?
Hi.
Janet Campbell?
Hi.
Tom Sanford, hi. So, hearing is, will be set for the 27th of April. I'm gonna get those notices in the paper. Zach, you Seth?
That works for me. Do you need anything else from the applicant at this time? I believe you have the fees, the application form. You obviously have the plans and we'll send over additional hard copies of the recently revised set.
Okay, that'll be fine, yep.
And electronic, so we can give it to the town clerk for
Well, we have it electronically. I can forward what we got.
But if he's revised it, we want the revision.
Revised. Unless there's further revision Seth, right?
There, not unless the fire department or police respond and we do something to address that prior to the meeting.
Okay, so you're all set, good.
The only other thing Seth is, is that we still need the fee for the A and R. I gave the applicant the plan for the A and R because he gave me the big check, so I figured we were covered.
Yep, yep, he had the big one. So I will remind him to
Just remind him.
Yep, great. And we appreciate your time and we appreciate you spending so much time reviewing this.
Yep. We aim to please.
Thank you. We'll see you, see you next month.
We got nothing else to do, you know?
Thank you Scott.
Scott, leave already?
You, I'm here, I'm here.
Oh, thanks Scott, yeah.
Good to see you all.
Good to see you.
Absolutely.
What's in the background Scott?
That's Maynard. It's either Maynard or my laundry room.
Your laundry room's pretty extravagant.
It is. Big window. Thanks guys.
Bye. Okay, um, the next item that's on the agenda, but it's not set for 8th until 8:30 is the continuation of the discussions with River Bridge and what have you. So we have it posted on the agenda, so I don't know how everybody feels about going ahead and bringing it up. Or whether we should wait until the allotted time.
Well, the Sunnies aren't here yet.
They're not, okay.
No, somebody from WDA, which is Waterman Design, is here.
Joe's here.
Yeah.
Yeah, but we should wait, I think.
Okay, yeah, I agree with you.
What's new and exciting? Let me think. Oh. A Realtor called from Atlanta representing Worcester Sands Pit to say that Toll Brothers wanted to talk. And would I get in touch with them? And I said, well, I'll ask you guys if you want me to talk to Toll Brothers.
No.
Thank you Janet. That was easy.
Well, they, they, if they, they would want to do housing, obviously, because it's toll. Now it's not zoned for housing, they have to rezonate or do an overlay, right?
Yep.
Right. And they do like duplex.
They do all kinds of things.
Right, but they don't do single family.
No, they do.
Do they?
Yeah.
Shrewsbury, if you're up at Davidian's and you look off into Shrewsbury, it's all those single family houses covering that hillside.
Oh, that was all Toll Brothers.
Yeah.
They're all over Pennsylvania or New Jersey.
Yeah, I knew they were national builders. They did the project over in Marlboro by the football field.
They, they built the, the over 55.
Oh, did they here in town?
That was Pulte.
Oh, Pulte, I'm sorry, Pulte. Yeah, right.
Yeah, that seemed like kind of a small project for Toll Brothers.
Competitors.
Yeah.
Yep. Right, I mean Toll Brothers usually does pretty extensive projects. True?
And sometimes.
They've run out of land though, they have to do small ones now.
They'll go anywhere they can make money.
Yeah.
At one time, they built a house on two lots over the line down in Pennsylvania, and the new house had to be ripped down after people had moved in.
Was it over a town line?
Yep, no, over a lot line. They had, it was over a lot line.
Oops.
When I was a young, younger person, I built the spec house for a Realtor and I put it on the wrong lot.
Nice.
What?
Yeah. So she bought lots and she told me which lot, she showed me the lot, we had it staked, we built the house and everything else. When they went to sell it, they found out that the lot that they intended to build the house was actually across the street.
So she showed you the wrong lot?
Yes, she did. And I built the house and she sold it and everything else. So she had to fly down to Florida and get the owner of the entire big piece, because they had broken it off, to sign off on that particular lot.
Wow.
That's great.
No, it wasn't. No, it wasn't.
That's a great story. Oh, man.
That'll get your blood pressure up.
Gave me a lot of gray hairs.
Oh, man.
Yep.
Wow.
Wow.
So in addition to Tim being queried, there was a phone call that was left on my machine, answering machine, is a somebody that's interested in the golf range for putting in some recreational fields.
Down here?
What kind, what kind?
Sports fields, they didn't say.
The guy that talked to me said baseball fields, but he also said that they wanted to enclose for some of the, you know, like with one of those tennis covers, the bubbles that they've used.
That's what I'd look at across the street.
And I said, go and look at the CR for that property real carefully because it's probably pretty specific about what can be done on that adjoining land.
Because that was, that's what allowed them to build that big building, right?
Yeah.
Right. What, what properties is this?
The driving range.
Oh, oh, the driving range.
See the big for sale sign out there? Well, not that big, but.
How big is that lot?
So what happened was Ronnie owned, of course, the whole thing. And he had the driving range and he had Uncle Ronnie's. And then when Pure Hockey wanted to build, they came in and said, we want to build, you know, 15,000 square feet. And we said, you can't, you know, the lot you're creating is only three plus acres and you know, that was this side of an easement for the power line, which never is gonna get built, but nonetheless. And we said, you can't build a building that big. And then we started talking about transfer of development rights. And we agreed, Tainer worked up a, a, a plan where on a sliding scale, if you protected land in the residential agricultural zone with a CR, the more land you create, protect it up to, I think we said 12 acres or something like that.
Right, it was 12.
Then you could build a, a structure significantly greater than what would have been allowed. And so they came in and, and said, you know, we, we'll protect all that driving range land. It had to be land that you know, wasn't already protected through the floodplain and stuff like that, or the rivers bill. So essentially the whole field beyond where the Ts are for the driving range got protected. And it's a good chunk of land, you know, it was because it goes all the way to the, to the watershed there, the, to the wetlands and the rivers bill. And then of course Ronnie owned all that land between River Row, well, Whitney and, and Pleasant, where the brooks go. So all that was protected anyway.
Right.
So it's a big piece of green.
But what's, what's allowed on there with the conservation restriction?
Well, it must be passive recreation and, and
Believe it is.
And so the driving range was an allowed use.
Passive means you can't have
Motorized.
dirt bikes and
Right, certainly motorized vehicles, right.
Right.
But the, and I wouldn't think you could build this a structure, even a seasonal structure. But I said, go and look at the CR, it's recorded, it'll tell you exactly what
Right.
I think I could shoot the roof out from my bedroom window.
Collect a lot of golf balls in your properties Janet?
Janet, it would block the, the big searchlights that shine your way from the driving range though.
Well, they're not on now, are they?
Well, yeah.
That's what she's gonna shoot out.
Yeah.
So is that, is that closed now? I mean, that's the reason we moved to town.
It's closed.
All right, well Ronnie passed away, right?
Yeah.
Yeah.
But the house and the cottage and the, all that land are all for sale, so.
The houses too?
That's what someone said, yeah, was listed.
Sign on that.
The, the whole thing is listed for a million something.
So what kind of, this is a, a town, not a state CR?
It's, no. All conservation restrictions are state, the, the town may hold the conservation restriction, but they're all approved at the state level. And
So what kind of things could be done on that property?
Depends on the details of the CR, each one is different.
The planning board negotiated this CR and the conservation commission was not happy with us.
Because?
Because we said things like Ronnie could drive a four wheel vehicle as he aged over his property. Because we said things like Ronnie could drive a four-wheel vehicle as he aged over his property.
Very specifically giving permission to him.
Yeah, it, it was the, maybe the owner, you know, it was, but it was intended so that Ronnie, as he aged. Because he said, you mean, I can't, if I wanna just go around and I can't walk, I can't, and we said. We said, oh yeah, sure, and, and the Conservation Commission saw what we'd agreed to, they said. First of all, the planning board has nothing to do with CR, so get the hell out.
I know, I know who said that.
So we haven't done any since, um, cause we shouldn't, but nonetheless. We played with that one. Well, we were trying to, we were trying to deal with the transfer of development rights, so you know, we. We got involved.
What kind of business would we endorse being, do we want on a piece of property like that?
Passive recreation.
Walking trails.
Yeah, um.
Is, is it allowed to be a profit generating business?
As long as it's passive. Like, there's nothing that would restrict, that restricts the. It usually in a CR.
You could run sun, you could rent sunbathing lots.
There you go.
So passive is just, uh, not motorized, or what's passive mean?
Don't tear up the land.
So I, a soccer field that had artificial turf probably wouldn't be allowed, Carolyn?
Good, that is probably true.
And a, a, a baseball field. Depending on. I mean, you know, you begin to think about baseball fields, you've got backstops and dugouts and, you know, lights.
Don't forget the stands for the mothers.
Stance for the mothers and.
Right, so the problem with something like that, that really becomes. The snack shack and the bathroom, and, you know, it's more that kind of stuff. That then, you know, oh, okay, you need running water, oh, okay, if you're gonna have running water, you need a septic, alright, if. You're gonna have enough facilities for two hundred people, so now you're into a much bigger system, and, you know, it, it's not just. Four, you know, five bags in a diamond shape. Um, and that's fine, you know, five bags in a diamond shape, woohoo, go ahead, have fun, but it's all of the. The stuff that you need to do to have it be an income generating. Facility.
Well, and I think more often now, they're looking for a year-round opportunity to utilize the facility they develop, so that's where this bubble comes in.
And almost always with something like that, if it's public, you need restroom facilities, you need running water, you need septic and.
You could put the old own houses over by the river.
There you go. Cut the little moon shape out and everything.
Having a seasonal or intermittent recreational venue that you're trying to make at least break even is very, getting harder and harder. Most of them, once I see her going out of business.
So if they read the CR, they may get back to us, or they may say.
Right, like they could put another mini golf facility, like there used to be. But it would, you know, it would have to be, it, it wouldn't be, uh, Kimball's.
Well, I'm trying, I mean, you, a mini golf would, I mean, like the one that was, well, of course, they fixed it up for the autism. Program that's there now, but.
Oh, is it still there?
Yeah, they fixed it up. The other piece of property.
But something like that, you know, that's, I would bet that could be argued as passive recreation.
It'd be interesting to see what conservation really thought of that as it progressed, because, I mean, you're really talking about a significant modification, more modification of the. The landscape for development of that than you would for a, a baseball diamond if it was simply the diamond, you know?
Right, right, I mean, but Boundless Adventures, the property that's on has a CR on it. But because it's up in the trees and all of the, the parking and the intake building and everything is not on the CR.
This site has land that's not on the CR, so, you know, they might very well be able to marry the two. Together sufficiently enough, so the Conservation Commission would say, yeah, your baseball diamonds are. You know, on the protected piece and you're not imposing too significantly on those, and so we'd consider that, so.
Where is the old wellhead? Cause that was a public water supply when Uncle Ronnie's was around.
It's under the Pure Hockey building. Yeah, they, they, they took it out, kept it, you know?
That's a bummer, cause that certainly would make that, uh, property more valuable. Alright, well, I believe, uh, certainly Matt's here, Chris is here. Um, somebody named Ally Sunny is here as well. You want me to, who do you want me to promote? Looks like, um, someone from Waterman has their hand up.
Okay, let's start with them.
Alright.
Yes, hello, this is Carolyn Burke from WDA Design Group. Do you hear me? Great, okay, I believe that Chris Sunny is going to provide an introduction for this.
Alright, let me promote Chris. I'll promote Matt also.
No, don't promote Matt.
Hey, Chris. We can't hear you.
Hear me?
There you go, yep.
Okay, good, thank you. Is, uh, John Burns also in the waiting room?
He is.
If we could promote him, and that would be great.
Excellent. Done?
Great.
You're alright.
There's John. And Ca- Carolyn, are, are you here? Carolyn Burke?
Uh, yes, I'm here, uh, by audio, can you, um?
I can hear you. We can hear you. Great, and, and Matt, are you here? We, we see you now, Carolyn. Matt seems to be muted.
There he is.
There's Matt.
Matt, you have to unmute.
Carolyn, the peepers in the house with you.
They really aren't. We do have the window in the living room open because we love to hear them.
I don't blame you, but boy, it sounds like they're right there and.
And I'm telling you, they get so loud, even with the windows open, it sounds like that, when they really get ramped up. It's awesome.
That's great. Spring is here, good.
I also have our two sisters, uh, you mentioned Ally, she doesn't wanna be promoted into the meeting, but wanted to watch today. And our other sister Casey may, may tune in. They, they have visited Berlin, but they're not actively involved in managing it the way Matt and I are, and, um. They've been to the site and they may have attended some of our meetings in the past, uh, but they wanted to listen in tonight. So, we appreciate being back on your agenda. As you know, we have a public hearing scheduled April thirteenth. For two, uh, warrant articles that relate to the zoning bylaws. One we'll talk about tonight, which is the, the possibility of adding. Townhomes as an additional permitted use on Lot Nine B, which. Uh, stretches from the cafe to the daycare center, and the other has to do with drive-up windows. We won't be. Uh, getting into the drive-up windows this evening, or any of the other companion articles that will be on the May seventeenth town. Meeting. Uh, we are doing a lot of work with the Subcommittee of the Town to. Go over all of the articles Matt and I have launched, we've submitted five citizen petition. Articles for the May seventeenth town meeting, and, uh, we have a, an active Subcommittee of the Town that's talking with River Bridge about. A number of items in addition to these two zoning items. So I don't wanna get into any of those others today, to, the purpose of, of this request to be on your agenda was to let John Burns. Our contract purchaser, uh, to buy Lot Nine B. Which purchases contingent upon the town meeting voters approving this extra use. And, uh, Carolyn Burke from WDA. Uh, WDA is the same firm we've worked with from the beginning, you'll remember Mike Dryden in the early years, and then Eric Bangsness. And Carolyn has taken over our file as of about a year ago, and has done some work with the town already. And she'll be playing a larger and larger role as we try to finish up the development phase. So I wanted to make a brief introduction and then turn it over to John and Carolyn, so they can. Talk with you about their progress on planning for these twenty-eight townhomes and how they would sit on. Lot Nine B and how that might work. So just by way of a little bit of background, these would be twenty-eight two-bedroom townhomes. I think you'll see from the work that WDA and John have done, that, that it fits well with. Within the site constraints that we have, Lot Nine B is already site plan approved. For about twenty thousand square foot of retail space, and this does not create more. Uh, impervious surface or require any additional drainage, and, and they'll address those issues as well as. Uh, landscaping and, and general layout. Uh, these are for sale. Unlike the, the apartments, the Rockwell, those are rental units, uh, the, these are for sale, they would be small. Uh, certainly smaller than a single-family home, they have a one-car garage, and so, this would, this would be offered for sale at a price that would be. Much less expensive than a single-family home in Berlin. Uh, also, ten percent of them would be offered at, uh, sales prices affordable to someone making eighty percent of area median in, median income. You may recall that in two thousand and nine, when we got approval, we, we were approved for four hundred and ten bedrooms. And even if these twenty-eight townhomes were approved, we would be below that number, uh, we would be at three hundred and eighty-four. Altogether, uh, we, we have commissioned, the town commissioned a revised fiscal impact. Study, which is still being digested and reviewed by the town, uh, and that is part of what the Subcommittee. And we are, uh, discussing. It does show that, that River Bridge is a net financial gain for the town, considering all. Municipal costs and all revenues. It also commented on the townhomes. And, and indicates that this would generate less traffic and more net revenue. Than the twenty thousand square feet of retail that we could otherwise build. Uh, in terms of an update on the apartments, I have fresh numbers for you, a hundred and forty-seven are now occupied out of two hundred and four. That's seventy-two percent occupied, and a hundred and seventy-three are under lease, which is eighty-five percent. We have generated far fewer schoolchildren than originally anticipated. Um, we have gotten the town credit for eighty-four, uh, units on its SHI subsidized housing inventory recorded at the state, which. Which is the main promise we made to the town when we got approval in two thousand and nine, is that we would get. Approval for affordable units that would get the town out of the, the unfriendly forty B danger, which we have done. And you may recall that the River Run parcel had been approved. For thirty-two single-family homes as an affordable housing project, uh, twenty-six of which would have been three-bedroom units. Uh, so ninety bedrooms up at River Run, and we. Purchased that and canceled that project, which had already gotten its comprehensive permit from the Zoning Board of Appeals, so that we would be moving that density down to River Bridge. And now, part of what we're negotiating with the town is to really turn River Run into even more of a, of a benefit to the town. We've built. Boundless Adventures, and we share the revenues fifty-fifty on that, but instead of talking with the town about an option to buy. One developable parcel at River Run, we're now talking about perhaps coming to your board. To see if we could resubdivide it from two lots into three, and make two developable parcels available to the town. Again, as part of the mitigation of the River Bridge project. Uh, we have brought commercial, we really are a mixed-use village, even though this particular last lot. We'd like you to consider and the town to consider allowing us to put townhomes on. We've brought over a hundred thousand square feet of, of, of commercial use, there will be another five thousand in front of the hotel, we're pretty sure that. Pad, because it is right in front of the hotel, will, will be, uh, built as a restaurant at some point in the future. Uh, we've submitted a report that. That really explains why we're here, over five hundred thousand square feet of commercial space remains empty within two and a half. Miles of our site, and what we're finding is that interest in building brand-new retail from the ground up. Is very low when there is a lot of inventory of empty retail available. And we have tried in, in earnest, we've given you some lists of the different types of markets and restaurants. Uh, and retail shops that we've tried to bring in. Uh, the town meeting voters wouldn't be approving this use. Uh, in particular, it would be allowing this, the planning board. To convert that commercial space into townhomes if, if it sought, if it thought that was a wise thing to do. Uh, so that's what we'll be bringing to the town meeting in, um, on May seventeen. So that's just a little bit of background about why we are. Continuing to explore with you and other boards in town, the idea of allowing this extra use on Lot Nine B. And I'll turn it over to, uh, I'm not sure if John's gonna speak first or Carolyn, but. Uh, both of tho- them would like to speak to you about how that twenty-eight townhome project is. Uh, shaping up on Lot Nine B.
Okay, Chris, thank you very much. Uh, I'm prepared to introduce the layout and conceptual site plan for the twenty-eight townhome units. Uh, we had submitted the plans to the town, and if we could start by pulling up the conceptual rendering. Is someone in the town going to pull this up?
I don't have access to it. Who has access to it?
Yeah, I don't, we, we wouldn't have access.
Carolyn, usually what we do is, is we get permission to share our screen. Uh, and we pu- we pull them up on our own computer. I'm sorry if I didn't let you know that. Do you have access to those drawings?
Okay, uh, just a moment, please. Yes, do you see my screen now?
Yes.
Right. Okay, so this Lot 9B is about 3.7 plus acres running north to south along the River Road West, opposite the hotel between the rotaries and adjacent to the River Bridge Apartments. The site, we have shown the 28 units as discussed and preserving the Basset Road entrance for River Road West at both the rotary and at the center of, near center of the property, running east to west. We're preserving the Newsome Road, which provides the connection to the daycare. The plan shows on the right side at the daycare, preserving the 24 parking spaces and an expanded bus stop. As was requested by the town. The expanded bus stop would include a walkway, including ADA accessibility along River Road West. The sidewalk provided along Basset Road. Sidewalk continuing to the daycare center. The site plan is also providing 10 cafe parking spaces. These could be used by the residents of the community overnight, similarly to the 24. The layout of the scheme is fairly similar to the layout that was proposed in, quite a few years ago for the commercial site. There are adjustments to the landscape. We've created a softer edge between River Road West and the house units. We've incorporated both deciduous and evergreen shrubs and trees. Similarly, the lighting has been reduced to soften the landscape and the appearance in the community. Lot 9B is a pretty flat site. The elevation change from the northwest flows to the southeast about eight feet. The grading, design, and utilities will work very well in this new scheme. And we've reduced the impervious area by over 25% from the commercial plan. The existing detention basins at the River Bridge Rockwell community were engineered to accept the runoff from Lot 9B. And that was for use higher surface coverage. Therefore, we anticipate that the design of the basins as engineered and built will be suitable for this project. Utility easements run along the south side for the hotel and for the River Bridge property. These will be preserved. And then we will have the utility easements running through Newsome for the daycare. These lines will include the sewer, the water, the drainage. The electric is at the street. There is a reduction in proposed parking spaces from 113 exterior spaces to 42 exterior parking spaces shown on the current plan. That's about a 60% reduction. The previous commercial plan had an interior sidewalk for Lot 9B. A sidewalk from River Road West to the River Bridge Apartment Community, to the bus stop, to the cafe and the daycare. We again are showing these walkway connections. We also anticipate that this current site plan is going to provide greater access through the site between the cafe and the daycare. The ITE, or Institute of Transportation Engineers Trip Manual, estimates that when comparing a commercial use such as restaurant, it would average about 130 vehicles per hour versus at 1,000 square feet of gross floor area on a weekday. For a general office use, the average percent of, with an average percent of gross leasable area leased at 88%, ITE estimates an average of 3.3 vehicle trip ends per employee on a weekday. For residential condominium townhouse, it is estimated that 5.8 average vehicle trips per dwelling would be made on a weekday. The current plan represents a significant reduction in parking spaces and the potential for the average vehicle trips per day compared to the commercial use. In summary, it is WDA's opinion that the layout, the circulation on the site, and the integration of all the roads, walkways, infrastructure, and utilities can be accomplished in a manner consistent with the approved site plan and with adjustments as the planning board may deem advisable after the town meeting vote. Thank you. I can answer any questions you may have.
This plan is very similar to what we saw in the fall, right, Chris?
This is very similar to what you saw in the fall. We have reduced one unit and we have shown the Basset Road connection through the community.
What's square footage on the units?
The square footage is 1,050 square feet per unit.
Two-story?
Two stories.
You want to get off of here? Come on, get off.
Can you tell me what's the estimated distance between the back of the units and the edge of River Road?
That's over 55 feet estimated. So we would like to have a soft screen planted area. We have produced additional plans. We have submitted those to the town. Those could be pulled up now if you would like to need to walk through those. Wrong one. Wrong one, sorry.
Eloise has her hand raised, Tom?
Is the plan closed or do we want to talk to Eloise? Caroline, do you have the plan closed?
Yes, the plan has closed from the screen.
Right, does she have the other one available?
One moment, please.
Let's hold on Eloise for a second.
All right, so they're looking at the existing conditions. Utility easement. Utility. These are the block buildings to be removed. This is the location for the proposed Basset Road and the extension to preserve the Newsome Road from the daycare towards the Basset Road side of the rotary. The proposed layout. Expanded bus stop. Walkway. Total parking summary, 70 spaces, 28 are interior, 28 exterior, 10 cafe shared spaces. Four parking spaces. The commercial site plan, 117,832 square feet of impervious material with a reduction to 89,215. Proposed utilities, ingrading, corresponding with existing conditions plan as built from the River Bridge NRP and based upon the utilities plan developed for the commercial site. Generally, the grade is pitching northwest to southeast. Connections in this area on the southeast.
Can I point out something that has nothing to do with the townhouses?
Yes, please.
You know where this road comes out, Basset Road? And there's a separation in this median over here. At least once a day, even though it says no left turn, some car shoots across like this across traffic.
Yes, I believe that.
It is really dangerous. It's going to really get somebody broadside someday.
And then this is our conceptual planting design.
Miles.
Are there any questions?
So what percentage of that total lot now is going to be green area?
Okay, looking at, if we look at the current sheet, you can see my cursor is floating over what looks like a lighter gray surface that is green area surrounding the project front of each of the buildings, along the streets, between the units on this side. Throughout, really.
Do you have a percentage?
I have not calculated a percentage.
Okay, I'd be interested in knowing that at a later date. That would be helpful.
Does any of the board members have any questions? Comments? Penetrating insights?
Now you're reaching.
How many parking spaces are there per unit?
There is one parking space, interior, and one exterior on the driveway. Or two.
And is it right behind the garage?
Yes, it is.
So they're going to be parking along?
This is, would be a typical driveway pooling into the unit.
So the little space that's next to it, that's to the left of you, yeah, right there.
That's green space.
That's green space?
Cow will be on it.
Yeah, so if you put one car inside, how do you get the, how do you get it out when there's one parked outside?
They would be stacked.
Shuffle them around. And where would guests park?
Currently, the guests would either park in the driveway in the 10 spaces on the south side. We've got four spaces on the property. And then the 24 spaces are the daycare.
Then where do the daycare people park?
No guests during the week.
Guests have to leave by 7:00 AM.
Drive around the block.
They'll be over, they'll be over in the childcare unit.
Yeah, or across the street at the hotel.
Yeah, that's true.
Well, I've never, I've never seen that. Is that a common layout to have a, have two car spaces? But basically, you have to very carefully arrange which one goes in first because you're, they're not both accessible.
And if they're in an argument, one gets run over.
Well, this is a, this is a project with an urban density where it would be more likely to have cars stacked.
This isn't urban.
Right.
I'd find I need four spaces at my single families. And these are, well, I guess these are smaller, they're 1,000 square feet. But how many bedrooms there?
Two bedrooms.
Two bedrooms, yeah. Doesn't seem like much parking.
Are not in site plan review at this point. And the way this will progress is we'll have a public hearing on April 13th. And then if the town meeting on May 17th were to approve this extra use, then there would be a formal site plan application and public hearing. And at that time, if the board wanted to shift features at the site around and have things laid out differently, that would be when we would really examine that. The purpose of coming so early in the process is just to give the planning board an idea that this can be cited here and it actually reduces impervious surface and increases green area. But again, if we get approved at town meeting, then that would be the beginning of a more formal site plan review where we would, John Burns and we would be looking for an actual site plan approval.
And at what stage does the number of units get set, approved?
Sorry, Jake, could you say that again?
At, at what point in that process does the number of units get determined?
It gets determined in site plan. It gets determined in site plan review. So if the board were to say that the way the, the warrant article reads is that the board can convert up to twenty thousand square feet of commercial to up to, up to, up to thirty thousand square feet of retail to up to thirty townhome units, but you, you don't have to accept, we're showing twenty-eight here, but you don't have to accept twenty-eight. It's, it's going to become this board's call. What is the final number of units and the final layout that makes this project work to your satisfaction?
Okay, thanks.
And just to respond to Janet's comment, at that time, if your board would like us to look at that intersection of River Road West and Bassett Road, we certainly can do that. Maybe there is an enhancement that we could. Design. What's that?
Close it.
Well, I think, I think there are those in town that want to make sure that stays open, but there may be some other control features that would make.
Well.
That left hand.
It's just right opposite this and they're constantly shoot across two lanes of traffic. And it's not even running at full speed.
Yep, you know, this, this is the town's road layout and we, we secured the grant funds for the Mass Works grant that allowed us to, that allowed the town to implement this widened River Road West. But we would be happy to help in any way we can if we could help solve that problem.
Maybe a bigger sign that says turn right. Only.
Well, there may even, there may even be something structural that a traffic and expert could design and would say is, is effective at making it much more difficult to turn left.
I think someone's gonna get broadsided there at one time.
Well, we'd be happy to look at this fresh, but this will involve the town's highway department. Because it's really the town's road. And we'll help in any way we can with a redesign if, if, if the, if there is a design that would make that safer, we will help with that as much.
I'm thinking, I have no idea, but I'm thinking if you slid Bassett Road over a little and put some of the townhouses on the other side, it wouldn't be a direct access.
Sure.
I think we could have engineers look at that and see if misaligning that intentionally would, would help with that problem. Maybe you're talking about shifting Bassett Road north a little bit, so it's not straight.
So it isn't directly across. What they're doing is shooting right across now.
Oh, not, they're not just making a left turn, they're shooting all the way into the gas station driver.
No, no, they're making a left turn, but they don't bother to go up to the Rotary to do it. So I think it needs to be shifted one way or the other away from that opening across the street.
I think the other thing that will help is that right now Newsome Road isn't built. But once Newsome Road is finished and built, I think people will learn to come down toward the cafe and come out the, the smaller roundabout, which allows them to go left or right. And, and right now that doesn't exist.
Miles, calm down.
Okay, well, thank you very much for this opportunity to present.
Welcome. So we're going to hear from Mr. Burns next.
Do you want to address Eloise's question?
Oh, I'm sorry. Yes, I forgot about Eloise. Thank you for reminding me.
You're welcome. Eloise, there you go.
Greetings all. On the townhouses, will they be constructed inside with the idea of aging in place? That what?
Will they have a downstairs bedroom or?
Basically, people, you could be thirty and find yourself in a wheelchair. Right. And as a member of the Housing Partnership, I wanted to know, is the, are the apartments going to be constructed to take into consideration that you age in place? I think Mr. Burns would be the one that would have a better answer.
Okay.
May I speak?
I can hear you.
Okay, good. The way that these are designed is that the both bedrooms are on the second floor. So I think I had spoken to Eloise when I submitted the plans and that one of the things that we do do is put in, we do make provisions for handicapped people that are handicapped. It's for them. One of the things we could do is to wire interior doors. You know, for people. In terms of the actual age in place, that would require a first floor master, if you will, from most people's practical thinking. He's gonna have a first floor master.
Then would it turn into a three bedroom?
No, there, there isn't enough room to put a, you know, a third bedroom in there. The first floor condition is essentially that garage that's shown, you know, in the front portion of it. And in the back part is basically a kitchen and a small family area. And then the second floor has two bedrooms. And.
Thank you.
You're welcome, Eloise. And I also, I don't want to put Carolyn off Carolyn, if you will, on the station versus. Carolyn Burke. Pardon me, I hope that came out correctly. But I know Carolyn McDonald had asked the question of how far the townhomes are set off of River Road. And I guess I would maybe curious, what was the setback for the commercial buildings? If our Karen, Carolyn Burke doesn't have that answer, then maybe we could get it for next time.
Right. Yeah, we had lunch over at the cafe on Sunday and driving past there, it's just, it's a, it's a pretty tight site. And the density is. Is a lot. You know, there's a lot of units in that small area. So just trying to visualize what it will, would look like driving down the street.
Our goal is so that, or one of the objective is so that you don't really see much landscaping and they don't know what the setback was in the commercial part. And and I don't know what the exposure was on River Road. I don't know that you would have seen the storefronts on, and so I think that we're gonna be a little more aesthetically pleasing you to go by on River Road because I'm guessing that you would have seen the backs of the commercial buildings on River Road. But I, that I don't know. We can find out that the next time. And then.
Yeah, I don't think it was the back, if I remember correctly, but. I also don't really remember pull-in parking in the front there on River Road, so.
No, it wasn't. It was internal parking.
Right. But it was a sidewalk in the storefronts on River Road. Is that correct?
When we went through site plan approval for the east side of, of River Bridge, the, the objective was to bring the retail close to the road, closer to the road, and to have all the parking in the back. And so I would, I would guess that if we compare this plan to the, what is currently site planned approved, the commercial buildings would be closer to River Road West. But that was the idea was to bring them into a sort of storefront configuration with this, with the sidewalk there and put all of the parking behind.
Right, because it, so it wasn't the back of the buildings, the commercial buildings that were along River Road.
It was the front.
Correct. Yeah, that's what I remember.
The only other thing that I would ask, and I, I'm not asking the board to do a homework assignment, but some of it, if maybe you can slip over it. Chris had submitted this lengthy report on the commercial space availability in the Berlin area. And his chances of building no commercial space. When this was happened through the pandemic and what was projected to, this happened or not happened. With commercial properties and the area. This will be good. Development and aesthetically and I think it's for the town of Berlin.
I mean, my main issue isn't that it's houses, it's the density. You know, we, most of our driveways are two hundred feet apart from each other in town. So. You know, aesthetically, I'm sure it would be a lovely facility. It's just not really in keeping with the rural nature of Berlin. And I have a feeling that's probably going to be the main pushback. So. I understand you're gonna make your, your profit out of it and, and everything, but the density is just quite a bit, especially on top of the apartments. I mean, the density of the apartments is fodder for grumbling in town. So to add a dense project on top of it is not really, I think, what people would be looking for.
I understand your point and it's well taken, and that's why we actually started out with more units at one point with three, two, I believe. And then we went down with smaller units in here. And that's where I added more green space and on the little green space calculation was.
And personally, I like seeing the smaller footprint. I like seeing the more affordable nature that that's gonna bring. But again, you know, it's just, it's jam-packed into that little spot. So. And I think the fact that it is also very conceptual, you know, and there's not really a lot to say right now.
Understand, and I, I told John today over the phone that we're not really looking for your reaction or, or thoughts on it because we haven't even had the public hearing yet and, and you won't be making your decision on, on whether to recommend this to voters or not until the close of the public hearing. But even these informal comments are helpful. And we now have a, a period of, up until April thirteenth to, to talk more about this design, you know, based on what we're hearing tonight. And then we'll, we'll be back in front of your board. And again, April thirteenth is the, the public hearing that must take place in order for a warrant article proposing a change of the zoning bylaws to be, to be brought to town meeting floor. And I did want to ask in that regard if, if things are set for the, the notices of that public hearing.
They, they're gonna appear Friday. The Telegram acknowledged receipt today and they said that they would be this Friday and next Friday.
Okay, great.
And these two articles, your two zoning articles are included along with the six for the planning board.
Okay, great, great. All right, well, we appreciate the chance to have a sort of dry run tonight. And we, we will consider the things that have been said tonight as we go forward and we'll be back in front of your board on, on April thirteenth for the actual public hearing.
I thank you again for the opportunity to present this concept to you. Good night.
Thank you.
Thank you, Carolyn.
Any of the board members have any other additional comments that they want to make at this time? Anybody have their hand up in from the audience?
Nope.
You have anything else that you want to say, Chris, or?
No, I'm all set. Thank you very much for putting us on the agenda. John, John Burns and Carolyn and Matt and I will talk further to see if there are any ways we might alter this plan, just based on the few comments we heard tonight. And then we look forward to, to the public hearing on the thirteenth.
Beautiful.
Excellent.
Thank you.
All right, thanks, thanks for having us.
You're welcome.
Good night, guys.
Good night.
That was all that I had on the agenda. If there's anything that anybody wants to bring up as a timely item. That's the only catch-all that I have left. No?
What else do you have on the agenda for the thirteenth? Just, just the hearing or?
Just the hearings, yep. Why? Did you need to put something on? No?
No, just wanted to check and see if we had other topics.
No, we shouldn't. The hearing starts at eight, so gives us a little bit of time beforehand to take care of any.
Yeah.
Like that, but.
You could squeeze an A and R in if you had to.
If we had to, yeah. Yep. But that's about it.
Nice. Good.
Cool. I will entertain emotion if we want to jump off of this call and.
I don't know, I, I'm so used to those peepers. I thought I'd just hold the screen down and, and fall asleep, you know?
You don't need their peepers for that.
Our peepers haven't started. We, we get them just as loud as Carolyn, but they haven't, they haven't seemed to woken up yet.
We down here.
Yeah, you're a little more tree covered.
We're more.
Yeah.
Usually ours are, you know, I mean, when you're in the blueberries, they're right there and along that waterway and stuff. And, you know, so you can hear them up here at the house, but not like they're in the room with you.
We've got massive coyotes this year.
Massive?
Well, you know, there's probably only two or three of them, but it sounds like there's a hundred.
Yeah, when they're, the other thing that I have heard is that they sound farther away than they actually are.
Oh, really?
Yeah.
So they're close?
So they're closer, yeah.
The, a decade ago, we began to notice that in the corn crop, there, there'd be an ear or so pulled up, you know, by the stalk and hauled out of the field and gnawed on. And gradually it got to the point where it was pretty significant. And then it began to be that, that they would, someone was pulling up ears and they were having quite a feast in the cornfield itself with a pile of, of corn cobs. And then, so we put up our game camera.
It wasn't peepers.
And, you know, we'd, we'd catch five or six coyotes wandering around the, the cornfield. And so, you know, they, they were having a grand time. So the coyotes on this end of town have become.
Vegetarians.
Vegetarians. The notion that they were going after voles and mice that were bothering the, you know, the blueberry plants during the winter is out the window now. I mean, they just.
Well, they're, they're opportunistic for sure.
Oh, they sure.
If, yeah, I remember seeing the pictures from the. I remember seeing the pictures from the trail cam years ago that you guys got.
You'd get five or six right there in the field right at the same time, so.
Yep.
And so some nights I'd say, I'm going to walk out, and I'd start. And I'd lose my nerve in no time.
It's awfully dark out there.
Oh, and that's sound. I mean, when they start.
Yeah, oh, gets you right in the back of the neck.
Right.
Yeah, February and March is mating season, so that's why they're so loud right now.
Yeah.
Yeah.
We had a whole pack of deer come down by my back lawn today.
Did you?
About three.
Really?
Yeah. They walked right along the back fence.
So I've been here seventy years, right? And have I ever found an antler on the farm? No. Last year, Marsha was out. We were pruning blueberries. They came up through the field and she had an antler. And then a few days later, John ended up with another antler. And then I'm in the asparagus because we burned it off. And I'm walking along, and I think, what the hell is that? And I bend over and there's a set of antlers two or three feet from each other.
Wow, yeah.
Usually they knock them off on the trees. That's why.
Right.
This was out in the bear field.
I know.
So I wonder if that means there's less porcupines around because the porcupines eat them, which is why you never find them.
Wow, so the porcupines. So of course, I've never seen a porcupine on the farm either. Pines over your way?
I've never seen a porcupine here, but I've definitely seen them. They like white pine forests mostly.
Yeah.
But there's definitely porcupines around.
There's got to be, yeah.
Yeah. Yep. And I don't I'm not sure if like this if skunks eat the antlers too. I know porcupines do. But, you know, for the minerals and the calcium and stuff, the char you and sometimes you can find antlers that have non marks on them.
But I just the whole notion of going all these years, walking ice fields and woods and stuff, never find and then three of us finding stuff last year.
Well, that also could be that because of, well, because of the lack of habitat, they're dropping their antlers in places where you're finding them now. You know, they used to just stay out in the woods.
Yeah. Well.
Your bear is bear is active.
Oh, it is?
Oh, yeah.
What is?
Your bear, yeah.
Your bear.
So the bird feeders?
Yep, we have to take a minute, right?
Yeah.
Well, I'm glad he's on your end of town and not out.
Once he doesn't have a seed, he'll move up to get your blueberries.
Yeah. Or your bees.
Well, he hit the bees about five years ago, and I keep thinking the blueberries or the corn, either one.
Sure.
I mean, he's I'm gonna actually I scared him out of the corn last year. Or act it probably wasn't him because this one was smaller.
This is a female.
There's probably three to five is what Fish and Wildlife estimate is a resident population.
This one's a female, and she's probably, if I had to guess, maybe two hundred pounds.
Yeah.
That's like the one we had, isn't it, Dennis?
Hopefully, the male lives up a chart in a farm.
I don't know. Honest to God, her paws are they gotta be.
That must be amazing. Take some pictures.
Their claws are like, you know.
Yeah.
I think it's off of her paw. It's amazing.
But these are black bears, and they don't.
Black bears, yeah.
Yeah, yep. No.
Just if you get between them and they're coming, that's the only.
Right. Don't corner it and don't threaten the babies, and you should be fine.
Exactly.
Yep.
Yep.
Well, we sent our Jack Russell Russell off to Florida for two and a half months, and now we have a rat obesity problem.
Oh, God.
Wow.
They're like dying of cardiovascular disease.
Oh, that's good.
You got to get a barn cat or a five.
Well, we have a barn cat who we had a bird problem one year, and he he will jump in the air and take a bird out of the sky. He's really solved the problem, but the the rats are too big. If once they're over about five hundred grams, the cats won't get them. But the dog, once he once he killed a couple, they all packed their bags and moved. I don't know where they went, but they were gone for months.
Rats? I've got one of my Sola. I've got a rat in my Sola. Henrietta, she comes out.
Bring Renly down. They're so amazing. They're so good at catching rats. It's unbelievable. They're so fast, and they shake, you know, they shake their head until there's a dog. Is that a rat dog?
She would shit her pants if it's all a rat.
All right. Well, we are still being recorded.
I'm I moved that we adjourned.
I second that.
All right, I have to do it by roll call vote. So Jay Teach.
Hi.
Timothy Wheeler.
Hi.
Carolyn McDonald.
Hi.
Jerry Campbell.
Hi.
Tom Sanford. Hi.